Children from elementary school to high school. Higher education is an option. City side as well. Just a short drive away alive Yakima Valley College in Grant. As well as Harvitz University. That right. City side.
Did she just give it? I guess.
The, um, the, a lot of that is new footage and then some of it's like long footage.
I, I'm on that one. And I said, if I didn't have my. It's so cute. Yeah, I've still got to introduce the dog to my UK. Bella is looking at me. McGregor is a different story. McGregor and Joe are a pack. But they did meet face to face and we didn't see. No, I think that's the first job that she was scared of. She's, I don't know, I think when she was younger, she wasn't very. And that's what I think McGregor's doing, but I don't know. Not having money for another man. That'd be it, mhm. I'm still trying to think McGregor out. He moved the daughter.
All of them respect her.
I know, I wore my nice white city of Sunnyside shirt to the last National Night Out. It has the Gregor footprints on it. There's a, I gifted mine because, oh, I just called. I gifted mine to put it back on, I have washed it three times. And it's like.
No.
Teenage. Oh, no. They don't realize that, yeah.
Called a meeting order. Welcome everyone to our City Council Workshop for today, Monday, October the 3rd, 2022. Ask the clerk to go down the list of the roles.
Mayor Duski.
That's very few assets, if there's no objection.
Councilor Lewis.
Here.
Councilor Palmer.
Here.
Councilor Rupi.
Here.
Councilor Vick.
Here.
Councilor Hart. Councilor Hart.
You have an opportunity.
City Manager Allo.
Here.
City Clerk Andrea Anderson here, Simon, Lieutenant, Chief.
I'm here.
Senator Johnson.
I'm here.
Senator.
I'm here.
Fisher.
I'm here.
You can be invited to go up and start your morning.
I'm here.
Alright, thank you. Alright, item one, our active agenda, our budget workshop. Pass that over to our city manager and staff.
Thank you, Mayor Burrisnow. Um, tonight I will have Jamie Warren present her PowerPoint of the preliminary budgets. Um, we don't have the actual budget books, but I have provided you with the PowerPoint that is on the screen behind you. We will have the same information as that.
And, um, I should have those budget books ready for you, um, by the council meeting on a week from today, Monday.
We can't hear you very well.
Oh, hold on. I'm trying to turn my microphone up, can you hear me any better now?
You can hear you a little bit, but it kind of sounds like you're in a tunnel or inside of a 55 gallon drum, I'm not sure which is it.
Yay. Let me change, let me see if I can change rooms that I'm in here, hold on one second. I guess this house is kind of echoey, so can you actually hear what I'm saying, but it just sounds funky?
Can we hear her okay?
No.
Sort of, yeah, we, we'd like to be able to hear you better, but we sort of make.
Okay. Give me one second and I will, um, I will switch rooms really, really quick. Is it better now?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Oh, good, okay. Um, I'm just on the floor now at my friend's house in the bedroom, okay. Uh, I'm in Kentucky, for those of you who weren't aware. So here it is actually our 9th.
In order for us to be able to hear you.
Okay, I'm gonna talk really loud, which is usually not hard for you. So Jackie, yeah, thank you, could you put the PowerPoint up? Presentation today, um, just with a review of the things that we have already put into, um, or that we requested already, were put into the budget so far. So as you'll recall, at the budget retreat, these were the items that were requested as enhancements, um, based on staffing issues and staff review. Um, we also at the budget retreat went through and, and did your council prioritization. And so based on some of those prioritizations, I was hope, hoping that we could have a conversation. Um, and we can hear some feedback from the council as to which of these positions, if any, you do want to move forward with. Um, when I went and I ranked, can you hear me?
Um, we have several here. If I, I know, so it, it will need to try to figure out if we can.
Can you say something, Jamie? Yeah, can you hear me?
Wow, yeah.
It's getting louder.
You can hear me now?
Really, can you hear her okay?
Yes, much better.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, you guys. Okay, um, do you want me to just start from the very beginning?
Yes. Now, thank you, General.
Yeah.
Okay, so to start off today's meeting, I'm hoping that we can revisit the enhancement requests for staffing that we discussed at the budget retreat. Um, in addition to doing this exercise, or to doing this, we also did an exercise of ranking priorities citywide. And the, the results of the council ranking were that obviously, um, public safety is definitely, uh, the number one priority. And following that, um, some of the code compliance and permitting issues, um, housing was really the next big one. So, ha, following, um, that presentation, I was hoping that we could go through this list of requested positions and see what council feels is, um, what they are amenable to wanting to add to this year's budget. So the budget that I have prepared that will be in this presentation has all of these positions in it. Um, and as we get to those numbers, you're gonna see some of them are pretty big, um, we can pull those back out as we, uh, get through this. Um, so I wanted, yeah.
Are you still really startled, where I, I mean, not being fair enough, could you call in on your phone?
Yeah, let me get my phone, hold on.
While she's doing that, is all, are you able to interpret what she said?
Yes.
For that to follow us, okay.
Yes, I can.
I would say her sometimes as well, if she's back on.
Yes, so these, uh, positions are the ones that we went over, um, and these have all been incorporated into this budget, so they are already a part of the budget. Um, and so we have total position cost for the recreation coordinator. So if you'll recall, we promoted the recreation coordinator to recreation supervisor. And that position has been filled by Mary, uh, where Mary is before we still do some work from city hall. Um, so we do want to try to bring in a recreation coordinator. Um, with the city council's objective of building our recreation program, that's what it used to be maybe 20 years ago, we have to start having some staffing. Um, a one man show is not going to be enough to do the things that we need to do to get our programming back up. So this would just fill that position that is already created and it would be budgeted for. So it's not a new position, it's just one that was not budgeted for and we would have been budgeted for it for next year. Uh, public works, we have the Assistant Public Works Director, and this is one that we have seen, um, really a need for. Um, as we grow, we have more and more projects that come up. And Shane Fisher, Fisher has been a working supervisor for the last 16 years. And he needs to step more into the role of public works director so he can focus on things like our tips, our secure stuff that, that you know, really kind of helps all of these cracks. Because he's been worried so much about every day, day to day work. And so this would bring in, um, one assistant public works director, and this one is, uh, non-represented and exempt. So this would be a new position, um, and it would, is included in this budget, so this budget does reflect the dollar amount that we would have to amend our personnel schedules and adds it to the, to that. Uh, facilities maintenance technician, um, as you know, we have recently added a facility. And we're finding that asking our perks maintenance to also do facility maintenance is becoming cumbersome. And they really, I, and it's my desire that we have beautiful parks and we have beautiful buildings. And I think the only way we can achieve that is if we add a facilities maintenance technician, that that's really all they do, we like two of them, so that they can take care of our buildings. And we know our inventory is going to grow as we grow as the city. Meeting in economic development, this is a new position, the planner. Um, we're currently still using YB costs because we have found that, um, Trevor Martin had had his hands full for the last three months. Um, correcting previous errors by previous people and also working on cleaning up our city. Um, I have tasked him with starting to help with, um, more of the community and economic development, um, helping code enforcement, um, basically close down properties that are substandard or abandoned. And owners refuse to turn them down, we've got three of those in action right now. Um, and so getting a planner would help with this, um, and then we could eliminate, um, the planner that we're using for YB costs. The administrations, um, city clerk, as you may or may not know, we get an abundance of public records. Um, so many that that is often the only thing that Jackie can get done in a day, is answering those. What we're looking for is a deputy city clerk plus record. They would be dedicated to primarily filling all of our records, but secondary to that, they would assist Jackie when she can't be here. They would, um, assist with minutes, they would assist with all of the jobs of the city clerk and be dedicated to filling for her. And this would be a real advantage for us because that would give us three people. Working from the office that know those duties. And we would have a very robust city clerk, um, basically office that would be able to handle all of this clerical and other things that they do. So this would be a new position, one FTE, um, and this is in the budget, but it is not in the position schedule. Technology support assistance, so this would be for our IT department. And as we brought, um, just that Silva and Dennis and I on, um, with Run and Run, it, it made the first month, we had 200 tickets that they fulfilled. And we want to bring this person in as a, like a desktop support, somebody that can come in and when you guys call, they can drop what they're doing and say, okay, let me, let me help you. Um, and, and you all know that IT sometimes has been hard to get a hold of because they're everywhere in the city. We think about the number of projects that we have coming, we have camera projects, we have, um, security for our buildings, we have keyless entry, um, you know. Building the Tucker Sellers property into what we want it to be IT wise and what we need it to be infrastructurally for that. So a lot of things, a lot of them have been hard. This is a new position and it is funded in the budget, but it would be a new position on our list. Legal liaison is non-represented. And what this would do is this would provide somebody to oversee the public defender contracts. We have currently, uh, shortage, shortage of public defenders. And we have the task on Jamie to try to add that to her, many other tasks that she has have been troublesome. It's, it's hard for her to, um, write contracts, negotiate with all these attorneys, and then try to bring it to council so that you can improve, um, those contracts. So this person would be a legal liaison between the court administration, the judge, and the city. And they would work to coordinate all of the activities that happen between all three branches of our government. And this is a new position, it is provided in the budget, and we do have money in the form of an OPD grant from the Office of Public Defense to help us just with the money in this situation. And that, Jamie, are you back on?
Yeah, can you guys hear me better now?
Not really.
Hello? What? Um, well, you did a really good job, Elizabeth. Um, if you can hear me long enough, just to, um, I can hear you guys really well. So if the council would like to, um, discuss some of these positions, that would be great. And then I do have some alternates, um, that I have that I can bring up, um, for some of these positions, uh, based on the council's feedback.
Okay, that works. And Jackie adjusted the microphone over there, we can understand you a lot better than we could a minute ago, so.
Oh, good.
We're not getting quite the, uh, the, or, or, uh, we need to have a picture.
Yeah. Well, if you guys, okay, um, if you want to start with the recreation coordinator position, um, we can talk about that position, whether or not council is amenable to that. And then the potential workarounds I came up with for adding this position would be to, um, trade this position out for potentially interns. But we would not be able to rely on them all the time, um, and/or bring in another part-time person instead of making it full-time. So those are kind of the, uh, directions I wanted to discuss in regards to the recreation coordinator.
Counsel, any questions or comments on the recreation coordinator position?
We have one recreation supervisor, we have one part-time cashier that is in the office, I think from.
And then her seasonal. Hi, hello?
And Jameson, this is your situation where we do not have this slide in our print slide deck, so they can't see your, uh, your red stuff.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, um, I can share this one if you want.
And we have it on the screen, that's, somehow I didn't print it right.
Okay. Or maybe I just sent you that email to print it right before I hit save, I don't know.
At any rate, most of us can turn around and see it, um.
Okay.
If you could, that's good, that'd probably be helpful.
Yeah. Well, I can re, I can sort of read these numbers out for you as we get through them. Um, you know, the, the request from staff was to have that full-time recreation coordinator. Um, Mary has gotten a ton of programs that she's trying to get off the ground from T-ball to flag football, she's working with the pickleball, um. A, she wants to do an after-school drop-in program, and we want to see if we can continue the summer camp, the summer day camp that we had. So all of those are the reasons why she feels that she wants to have the recreation coordinator position. And based on, um, the council putting some money towards ARPA for recreation, um, we would like to highly request that you, that you consider funding this full-time. But if that is not something that the council is open to, then we are requesting a part-time recreation coordinator and then, um, using interns as well for the busy times.
Counsel, any comments on what we just.
Mayor Boisman?
So we have a question, what, what would this person do during the winter?
Julia Holton, Councilor Rupi.
So the, the question is, what, what would these people do during the off-season, during the winter, when they don't have the day camps and, and the other outdoor activity?
If I may answer that.
So, yeah, um, so during the winter, there are, there are potential programs that could be going on. There's, um, there is indoor sports like basketball and volleyball. There is also, um, like I said, the drop-in program for kids for after-school and then, um, having potentially an open gym. Um, so there are other things like that. And then in, in addition, it does take preparation time to prepare for the spring sports and, um, the summer sports and getting registrations out, planning for the program, setting things up. So, um, there is work to be done, um, and we do believe that we could use two and a half full FTEs, so the supervisor, the coordinator, and then the rec, the receptionist.
And if I could weigh in, you know, on this group, um, it, it also is a position in the winter where you're playing catch-up from your very busy, um, summer and fall. Um, we start hiring and put the VISA applications out in usually early September, and we start trying to get commitments from them. If you're chasing kids that are in college, trying to get answers on whether they're gonna be in your, in the program, you're starting to make schedules of when you're going to have events. Um, there are usually at least one day that event a month, um, there's the, in, right, in Thanksgiving time, we're gonna do it for each of the dinner service, the community. That takes a lot of coordination and people that you have to get volunteers, but three people couldn't do it. So really, the winter is your planning time, it's your cleanup time, and it is getting ready for your spring. That's a lot of work, because I oversaw it, and it's a lot of work.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Hart, do you have a question?
Well, I was going to say that I think we, as we are trying to build up the recreation program as part of our long-range safety issues for our, our children and our community. I think that hiring a, uh, full-time, an FTE, uh, recreational coordinator is in our best interest. Uh, supplementing that, of course, as we have in the past with, with, uh, interns and part-time, uh, people, I think that we do need to have that coordinator there. And some of those, you know, maybe we'll be able to find some volunteers to do various things, but as we're building towards that, I think it's really important that we have, that we go ahead and fund the, uh, recreation coordinator. I'm just firmly in, in favor of that.
You, other comments, counsel? From my position, I wanted to remind counsel that, um, this was important to counsel when we had a public safety meeting shortly after, I want to say shortly after the events of, uh, Inco de Mayo. But, uh, we may have even mentioned it before that, where we were saying that activities for our kids to keep them positively engaged in things rather than involved in gang activity, giving them alternatives was extremely important. And there were members of council who moved that very purposely to the top of lists. And so this is a follow-up of that, this, this position appears because of that, we said it was a priority, we put it to the top of lists. And so now we have that top of lists here, um, this is now where we commit the money, are we still as committed to this position as we were a few months ago?
Okay, and then, um, I just listened on by the sleep feed with our dispatch is getting, um, Jameson's voice all the way down there, it's echoing, it's so loud, they can't hardly hear the creature on the. Um, I think.
Oh, dear.
We're gonna have me continue, and then, um, I'm gonna keep my work cell phone next to me. If you see something, or I didn't say something that I should, please send me a text message, and we'll say it out loud.
Okay, so you're gonna take over this, and I'm gonna hang up, and we're just gonna text.
Yes, we're gonna work with it.
Okay.
And, and send me a message if I admit something, or there's something else you want to add.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good.
Okay, so our public works director, our assistant public works director and our facilities maintenance technicians, we want to keep those, not exchange them for anything, um, for the reasons I stated before. Um, and the nice thing about the assistant public works director, it is paid by the enterprise fund primarily, so it would not impact the general fund, which is the one that we always have to worry about making sure is in balance. The facilities maintenance technician would be divided up by the number of buildings and the number of programs that they serve. So their, their salary would be spent kind of citywide, so that would also help with the cost of these two positions. So I will only take some questions.
Counsel members, questions or comments on this position?
Yeah. I understand what you just said, but, um, I'm adamantly against full-time positions under money. And, and I think that these things, be away with them for reasons many years ago. I don't know for financially ready to make that obligation, and I don't want to ease that for my, absolutely not want to ease that for my daughters, as far as that goes. Uh, but I think that anytime you start making long-term commitments on one or two-year money, we're gonna get ourselves in trouble, and we're gonna have to lay somebody off, or, or cut a position sooner or later.
And all of these positions are not funded with our, not funded with one-time money, they're actually funded within the program and the budget. So I, I would like to know that we did a very careful study of where this money was coming from and how you were going to achieve this, and none of them are one-time money.
Would you say that these come from the enterprise funds? Is it a sustainable position, both of these are sustainable positions?
And we build our rate based on our position, that's, you know, really salary for benefits is some of the biggest expenses for the city. Um, but as I've found, when we have a bad thing, it means something falls off the place. It means we can't write a grant, or we can't do a project because we don't have enough people to actually do the work. So as we're increasing, we're expecting more of our employees, we're expecting them to find savings, we're expecting them to be frugal, and we're expecting them to look for ways for us to enhance revenue. And then a, a theme of minds to employees that we constantly need to look for better ways to do things and, and also find revenue where we can. Um, because I think a lot of. Um, because I think a lot of times, we aren't always taking that down to everybody and saying, help us find it.
On the maintenance technician, these are not going to be janitors used to call the buildings and repairs.
Correct. Yeah, there's a lot of janitors, um, we have a janitorial service. These will come in, and when we decide we want to, um, I don't know, fix the floor, the TV, they will be the ones that will come in, do the bid process, they don't have to physically do the work as far as that goes, and then they would help out with what needs to be fixed and things that need to be repaired. Um, Keith right now has a, um, park board counter in the front subterranean, and we haven't had time to go in and replace it, and it's something our staff could do, but they just haven't had time, and he's, he's been asking for that to be repaired for, what, I don't know, five years?
Five years.
Yeah.
But we have, we have other issues too.
Right, and so there's just a lot of things that, that, that these people, they would be doing maintenance of facilities. They would do painting, they would do, you know, if we wanted to do landscaping and they, we didn't have, they didn't have the skill set, or we didn't have the time, then they would go out and do landscaping for contractors and get things done. And, and really, that's where our facilities have really kind of been hurting. And I'll give you an example. We had the Christian school a couple of years ago before and then tear out all the shrubs and, um, dead kind of stuff outside my office, and we haven't had time to fix it, so I've got bare dirt sitting there, and it drives me kind of crazy. And I would just love it if I could say, somebody, please go sit down and use some rock and make it look nice. And that's what I want to see. I want to see our facility.
Any questions or comments by counsel?
I'm going to come back to.
Ms. Harper, I would like to give other people a chance to listen.
Do you see it needing two full-time people?
I, when I first see is we hire one, and we see how that goes. But we're going to take a laundry list of all the things that we have going on, and ask staffers and assistants if they're going to be capable of doing it all. Um, but again, I think you hire one, you kind of wait and see. Officially, it's a brand-new position, um, and then you go from there. And if we need that best one, we have it listed, and you have it authorized, so we know just directly to it right away.
Or we just bring in one next year and do it next year?
Yeah, we can do that as well.
Questions? Ms. Harper, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, my comment on this one is, I really think, having watched how the, uh, public works has struggled in the past to keep up with a enormous workload, I think that, um, moving ahead with the assistant public works director and the facilities maintenance technician, I think we really need to do that too. We're growing, people. We can't just keep thinking that we're still, you know, in the past here. We're growing, we've got, and that means we'll have more money in our pocket. So I really think that we can afford to do this, and I think it's in our best interest.
Ms. Harper?
Thank you.
To my, these are enterprise funds, so our community members, as always, will be the ones who will be affected by it. I just, I just want to make sure everybody knows that anytime we hire somebody, we've got to have our hand out to the public, so they can put some money in it, so we can have what we want to do. So I think we need to be very careful on, on what we hire and who, a- and, and the process we're going to go through, uh, in dispersing or putting the money as to the account it comes from.
Speaking back on that, we've all been watching the news. So we're heading into a recession, and it's going to hurt a lot of businesses and a lot of people, and a lot of government organizations. I have in mind too, we don't know what's going to happen this year. So remember, who knows what's going to happen? We just have to keep in mind too.
You can't be afraid.
All right, thank you, counsel. Um, just a couple of comments from my position. Um, I know public works has been overstressed, overworked the last few years. Um, City Manager made an important point that, um, each hire allows us to, uh, increase our expectations. And one of those expectations would be that public works with a, with an assistant director and a director to be able to say about, for example, street maintenance, where right now they're overwhelmed trying to get people shuffled from positions. And, you know, because of the last couple of years, they're behind, and, and chances of catching up are going to be slim. But, you know, to be able to raise our expectations, something that I really, I really want to do. Um, every once in a while, I get to travel, and it seems like I always end up bringing it up at a council meeting. But it wasn't so long ago that I was in Burns, Oregon. And if you've been to Burns, Oregon, Burns, Oregon is literally in the middle of nowhere. There's two towns, Burns and Hanks, that are right side by side, and there's nothing else outside of that. It's just empty space for the most part. And yet their parks are perfectly green, lovely trimmed, uh, their city buildings are absolutely beautiful. How they managed to pull that off, I have no idea. I think we've got a lot better water supplies than they have. I think, um, we've got more talented personnel, more opportunities for talented personnel here, but yet there they are. And those are the kinds of things I want to see as many times. I want to see our parks green and well-manicured, and I want to see our streets clean, and I want to see them well-maintained. And, um, not, not all these projects falling through the cracks because we can't shuffle people around. However, the point that, that was made that we don't know what's coming up in this next year. The economy looks like it's a little bit trembling on the edge, and it could drop off at any time. Um, we don't know, and I don't think any year we know. I don't think in 2020 we knew that we would have this, this windfall of income per minute at first. Um, I fully expected the city to, uh, plunge into a, a deep dark hole, and it would take us a long time to get out of it. Yet, um, it's not better than we thought. So I don't think we can automatically say that things are going to go bad. We need to be really careful in, in how we look at these. I personally think the assistant public works director is a necessity. I could go back and forth on the facilities maintenance technician. I'm in favor of one for sure, but not, um, not necessarily two for this year. So that's, that's kind of where I fall.
So the next one is the community and environment development director. Uh, this would be the planner. And what Ms. Harper is proposing is that if we can't afford planner, she would trade that for a grant writer. Um, grant writer. We had actually advertised her for mom's relief, and we received three applications. One had potential, but they didn't return our phone calls. Um, one had no experience, and one was off all height. So, so this is, um, something that, um, maybe what we do is we look regionally, and we look for a grant writer that we can share with talent and should be ready to meet the event. Um, but we could do that, but we do see a need for a planner. And, um, last one is the city clerk, and that's the deputy records, uh, city clerk's record clerk. So I'm going to speak to that one right now a little bit. I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but we have a deputy city clerk that is the, uh, public works administrative assistant. Whenever she fills in for Jackie, she receives a premium pay, is it 10%? She receives a 10% premium pay, but she's doing the entire job of Jackie while she's gone. So when Jackie is out, it's very difficult for her to do her administrative assistance duty and do Jackie's full job. Um, so someone has to give, and the public records request, you have to reply within five days. We know that we have in the past an issue where we had to make settlement to someone because we didn't get that five-day window. Um, I, I've actually instructed staff at this suite to, if you get anything in writing, you know, newspaper that the public records request, you, you scan it and you email it to me, to Jamison, and to Jackie. So if one of them falls through cracks, we've got two other people that can, can pull that up. Now imagine if we had four. And imagine if we had somebody that could do that work almost full-time, but then also be trained for when Jackie's gone, to just jump into her role quickly. And it's, it's been a row. Um, I have been for me, um, obviously I've worked with other cities, and I've been a deputy city clerk. And let me tell you, it is a full-time job, and it's expedient. So, um, I wasn't very surprised when I came here and we didn't have one. We kind of farmed it out on other staff. So, um, if you'd like to talk to me about the grant writer or the city clerk, I will answer.
Counsel members, any questions?
I'm in full agreement with the grant writer. Grant writer, a good one will pay for themselves and bring first, city staff basically, for you. I'm sure we could look at.
And we also, uh, Gibson sent me a message that said, Trevor believes that a planner may be able to get help with grants. So we might be able to, if we have the planner, put grant writing on that position. Um, we've had comments in other cities where you have a planner slash grant writer, and they take on those duties. And then combined with the clerk, and they've gone together in one position. And so that would be, um, the core liaison, we would add it to the deputy city clerk record officer. And we, we are trying to do part-time plus interns if we can. Um, we're looking at trying to start a intern program. And, and I'll be honest with you, I've, I've worked on intern programs, and they are successful. Usually, you get your candidate that is a go-getter, they're smart, they're usually in college, they're doing a summer internship, and you know that that's someone, when they're ready, you want to hire. Also, get the ones that you know, you, yeah, you, this is going to fit for you. And so that is something that we really want to try to incorporate. And, um, you know, part-time is, is something that we really need to start exploring, so that we aren't getting these FTEs, so that it's easier to write out a part-time person than it is somebody that's full-time and been on the books for years. And so as our economy is uncertain, we could do some of this support angle.
Further questions, counsel?
I like the idea of the planner slash grant writer.
Ms. Harper?
Yes, I'm, I'm in agreement with that. I think that if, there's a way to balance that. Because obviously, as, as someone earlier said, I think a grant writer could probably pretty much be able to pay for themselves i- in getting grants. Um, but the planner is also a very important thing, and we need both of those. Right now, with the community economic development, that job is just taking, I mean, it, it is just, it's just growing exponentially. And so I think that having a planner slash grant writer could be, could be one way to go. I, I like that idea. I prefer that we had both, but it, under the circumstances, you know, if we had one that was slash this, and, uh, that would, I think that would be a good way to go. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, counsel? Well, I like the idea of the combination of the deputy city clerk and the legal liaison. Um, I think that can work, that can, for the most part, take care of two problems with one person. I understand that public records request can be a full-time job. And I know that the legal liaison, there will be plenty to do, at least for the short term, because we are in a, I think county-wide, a chronic shortage of public defenders. But, um, for us to be able to take on both of those is a little bit, I, I'm I think a grant writer planner combination would be a good choice. Um, because the two work with, the two jobs go well together. Ideally, I think all of us, we'd like to have a crystal ball and be able to look forward. Okay, now our finances are going to continue to go the way that they have been going, and we'd love to just grant you every basket. And yet we, uh, we've been through a couple of these economic ups and downs over a period of our lives, and so we're a little reluctant to just open the floodgates, and I think you've heard a little of that this evening. Um, and, and rightfully so. This comes from experience. This isn't something that, uh, you know, we're not new to this. Yeah, so for me, you know, I, I echo, you know, the sentiments of my, my colleagues here, the planner slash grant writer, and then, yeah, they suggested, I think, the combination of, uh, city clerk and legal liaison, and I just, I like the sound of that.
Thank you for your, um, input, and we'll react on your suggestions. Um, so let's turn to the next page. And this is just a reminder on the proposed ARPA request. Um, these were the one-time things that you presented. Um, we have signed the soft state safety cameras and city cameras, uh, strike cameras, and the body and, uh, physical cameras. Those are, um, things that are either six months or 18 months out. So, um, we're trying our best to get those and send it as soon as we can. Um, we have already bought the Esri mapping and the LEAP online. Um, we bought in here a grant writer, but that could be something that we take out of the one-time money, and we add it in on the other one. Okay, designated crisis responders, we may not be able to get. Um, Jamison, and to remind you, I mean, that they are hard to come by, just as much as some of the public defenders. Um, they're very few and far between, um, and they're very utilized, very much so. So that might be something that we have to, um, you know, discuss. And this, and we've all seen this, our laundry list, and as we go through this, there may be things that we don't fund because of lack of resources, and we may be coming back to this, they'll say, here's this last little bit of money that we need to now figure out how to spend. And I probably would say, let's go for some playgrounds.
I get a lot of comments from the new playground equipment over at Community Center. Are quite pleased with it. Initially, they're confused because the playground is relocated, but then, uh, they're always pretty positive about the new equipment. So I think, yeah, the parks.
And if you're not aware, the night of the last national night out, I stopped by because I wanted to take a look at it. I hadn't seen it finished with the landscaping. There was a gentleman there that, um, said, thank you for this park. I have an adult disabled barber, and this has an adult plane that she can sit in and actually and he said, next time you build a park or build a recreation equipment, you know, please keep that in mind. And it really, really made me feel good that we made that choice, um, because sometimes, you know, that community is underserved. So I think that that is something you guys get to go over there, check it out. I'm a little shorty, I couldn't get in it, so. Okay, so now we're looking at the proposed budget change for 2023. And I'll note that we have an original and proposed, and a different one. So the original is last year's budget. The O is the new budget, and the difference is whether it's increase or decrease. And these numbers will change with the adjustments that we used from the last page, so, or the last slide. So the changes in FTE, changes in full-time versus part-time will change these numbers. So it's supposed to be clear that these are all still a work in progress. They will change with the adjustments and as we make other changes down those. So, for situationally aware, we had a original budget of $37,931,240. We have a proposed budget of $40,449,121. $3 million, sorry. Um, the difference is two, basically 2.5 million. So we've increased our revenues by 6%. And on the, uh, I'm trying to keep checking my phone, and I'm getting myself confused. The expenditure side, we have $42,927,140, and we're going to find that 40 cents in here. And we have $46,293,991, and the difference in that is $3,366,840. Always that you want to realize that it, that insurance includes sundown, so it is a little confusing. So that does include our beginning sundown, or any sundown from 2022 and our beginning sundown from 2023. That's including anything that we've used sundown. Any immediate questions on this? I think I, I think you guys probably want to take me back and kind of mull over and figure out what questions you have, and I think I, I think you guys probably want to take me back and kind of mull over and figure out what questions you have and why these methods some places and down in others.
Councilmembers, any questions, Art? Any of these items that just come leaping to the top of your mind? Remember, you will have an opportunity to study this and come back with more questions. But I think what the manager was saying is the difference of 6.6% versus 7.8% is fund balances. That's money that's already in the funds at the end of the year. We're not overspending our income by, you know, 1% every single year. That, that's an exercise in utility and our financial department knows better than that, so. And I think I heard a comment, Ms. Art, was that you?
Yes, and I was just going to say, I like the opportunity to kind of mull over those things just a little bit, too. I always like to have that five-year plan out there, too, so we can kind of, even though, you know, you got to factor in the pandemic stuff. But I, but I think, you know, we do need to mull this over just, just a tad, just make, make sure we're completely understanding it.
Right, and this time we've all got a hard copy in front of us. And so we'll make sure, or if you could stop and I'll pick that up so that you can study that a little more in detail.
I'll stop in and get one, absolutely. Sure. Thank you.
Okay, so the next slide is the five-year regular revenue compared to my funds. So this looks at our revenue in totality and looks at where we are and where we, where we were of actual. And then in 2022, our budget is, and then our sum of our 2023 is. So as you can see, we have maintained steady, starting at 27 million, then we go to 28 million, and then 29 million of actual. We're at 28 million budgeted. And I'll tell you, our revenues have been looking really good. You're not showing a decrease in those online sales tax. I think people aren't used to doing that and maybe it's one life that's around. And then our 2023 proposed is 33 million. Again, this is high level. I know you'll need to go back and take a look at these and start asking questions. This does include some capital projects, this includes grants, and obviously some of our beginning fund balance.
Questions, council members? So the jump from 28 million to 33 million seems like a fairly large jump. I mean, I kind of jumped myself when I saw that. But as the manager mentioned, some of this includes fund balance balances that are already going to be there. And some of it includes grants and other projects that are going to be happening. It may not be as big of a jump as it looks like, but we all have the opportunity. It's responsible, we can dig into this a little more and make sure that we all understand what, what is happening here. And the manager, Ed Abet-Davidson, is more than happy to answer questions when you tend to stop in at the office, so.
Okay, five-year operating means expenditures compared to my funds. So you'll see that looking back when we saw the revenue, now we're seeing expenditures from 2019. We had 27 million in savings, 18 million in expenditures. Our staff is doing an excellent job of keeping their bottom line, not asking for more than we can afford. And also we are being prful, really prful. Next one is the 2020 actual. So if you can hear the 21 million actual compared to the 28 million revenue. Again, we are keeping ourselves in line where we need to be. Next one is the expenditures in 2021, actual of 23 million. And we have actual of 29 million, almost 30 million dollars. So again, keeping prful, keeping enough money in things that we can, you know, afford things and still making sure that we have what we need. In 2022, we have 24 million in expenditures versus 28.7 in revenue. And the proposed revenue compared to the expenditures is 29.6 versus 33.6. And I think the last time we, Jameson calculated it, we were keeping our ending fund balances right around 16.7%. Remember, we have three days of operating revenue in the general fund. We're not going back there.
I appreciate that.
The next one is the general fund operating.
Are there, are there any questions or comments on this page?
No.
So general fund O and M, that's by department. So now this is breaking it down by all the departments and the general fund. So we have a fund called Aging and Disability. What that is, is those are the pre-let firefighters that were converted over to let. One, we still pay their insurance and then reimbursements for their alcohol, cocaine and things like that. Because they, they have that, you know, that's something written in state law, we don't have much choice. So you can see that we have pretty much stayed right along with the same numbers. Jameson, could you text me and tell me why the 2023 proposed is so much like 8,000 more? And she wanted to make sure that, how do you know this? One of the reasons that 2023 looks inflated involves revenue expenditures. That at this point in the budget process, some items may be reflected in the 2022 budget also. And as we wait for them to finish, we have to include them fully in 2023. Some of them are carryovers from this year. And then she says, we budget the maximum liability. So if we know we're, we have a project that we haven't started, we're going to budget for it next year, even though in this year's budget, we know we may need to carry that forward. We're going to budget for the maximum liability. And then airport, we have fees, make fees in airport. And what that is, is that is FAA grants that we have available. And so we've been working on the airport master plan. And I think you guys remember that $550,000 expenditure we, we said we needed. And so this 2022 budget and the 2023 is a reflection of that. Master plan may not be finished before next year. Building department, you'll see an increase because we have increased salaries. We've added another building inspector. And then also another code enforcement officer. Capital expenditures, really we have it invested in our capital expenditures. You can see that in 19 and 20. We have some that have been, we really haven't done a huge amount of investment. So these kind of stay flat, but we are going to start building for capital expenditures, you know, because we need to look towards the future. Special services, this is things that we have that are shared use. So we have a line item in budget for city hall facilities. And what that means is special services, IT pays for, you know, IT pays for everybody, right? And so we have to pay our portion of the IT cost. That's there, and then that also is, I mean, honestly, HR, it is IT, it is the shared toilet paper. So city hall facilities, we chart that out to all the departments. So that's kind of the, it's central, centrally located place to put stuff. And then we, we export some things and import some things to that. Close attendance thing, this is a program that was put through the courts. And we found out that Yackwood County, we were paying for it and we weren't receiving any benefit for it. So you'll see that the last payment in this one was budgeted in 2022. We have ended that program then and we're going to take those revenues, the very small amounts we get, and find a better use of them. Confrontation, I'm trying to think what confrontation. Oh, it's required by the state, Jameson said. So, another one we don't use yet. Corrections, this is our jail facility. And you can see that we've had fairly, you know, fairly good years and fairly not so good years as far as our expenditures. We really can see the COVID year. And some of that has been in corrections that because Clara has left its positions open and unfilled there purposely because we. We've, we've been very lucky, we had no layoffs during COVID and our jail was relatively full. So it was super full, but it was enough to keep us going. But disaster, again, I think this one is required by the state. And dispatch, I'm sure all of you know what dispatch is. And if you recall, last year we took on Tovish as dispatch, so that did increase our expenses. But we also have them paid, so that's not an ad our expense. Employee benefits. So she says that disaster is memberships and stuff. Employee benefits, that is. I think on my phone, what's, what are the keys, I think? I usually have the little cheat sheet I keep and then I, my, my finance brain isn't on anymore. No. Oh, that's left one medical. That's the actual insurance for our left one. Executives, that is your funds. And we have increased, you'll see a little bit in the 181,000 proposed. And that's because we're going to try to get you to more training. I think that's important for you to go to training and get to your different organizations so you can talk to other people living in your city. Why not her? No, that's me, is you, she said. Oh, that's me. Well, I think that is more training. But there is missing things, this legislative. Okay, this is in, this isn't in budget order, this is in actual. They're in, what do you call it, alphabetical order? I'm thinking I'm going in budget order and that's what's going to be. Exactly with me, the increase would be probably the increase in training that I'm asking for. Because I am going to do the ICMA two-week, you know, six-week academy. That will start in January. And then there's some conferences and things that I'd like to attend. And it's really important even for me that I am the one that has that training and goes to those kinds of things. Finance and clerk, that is an increase mostly for the deputy. Fire and MS, obviously, you know, turn that one in. Law enforcement, that would be, they're chief of Clara. And I think those increases are due to increased staffing. And those are probably one-time ARPA money that we've done that with, so that number could change. Legal, this is our city attorney and our public defender. These are all charged here. Now legislative, here's yours, line item, which is, that is increased for travel and training. Municipal courts, slight increase. They have had vacancies and now new hires. And so we're hoping that people who've been in the industry over the years, people don't seem to want to work anymore, might be. Other decreases, we've done. And planning, that would be the additional planner. I have two parts. So that would be the increased debt that we were asking for. So that one may change just a little bit. Money is about 20,000 more, not very much. And.
I'm using my pen.
Okay, so recreation facilities, that is again, getting our facilities up to the standards we want them to be. So that would be additional, possibly landscaping or having someone come in and do some work for us. Redemption, oh, recreation facilities, that's that, redemption sets, straightforward. And then street is just on there because it used to be in the general.
Over recreation and.
And that's full-time, that's full-time recreation. Any questions so far? Pretty, pretty thin.
Councilmembers, questions or comments? Art, feel free to sign in at this point as well. Out here in the center, the manager, you may continue.
Okay, so we have our enhancement requests funded, so these are things that we would ask to include in the budget if they are not funded. Public works have replied for the water division, well communication upgrades for well seven, nine, and 11. New equipment in the mini excavator dump truck. Building improvements and closed storage and a new roof. Tour divisions, UV lighting system upgrades. Building improvements, vehicle storage shops and asphalt. And then capital projects, headworks and lift stations. Street division requests our equipment, nickel lift, portable air compressor, snow cloud blade, and street sweep. And that, I would take any questions.
Council questions?
Yeah, I'm assuming the portable air compressor is one of the compressors. Not portable on the wheels and the two around.
No, that would, and I think for the street division, a lot of what that has to do with is. But they need it so that they can clean off roads, because we've actually had graffiti on the streets. And so we, this would be probably one that we would use for more than just one thing. So it would be house and street maintenance.
What's a snow cloud blade for?
It'll be for one of our, I believe they put them on one of our dump trucks for Xandy.
Okay. Vehicle storage shelves, what's.
So in the tour division, we have, we obviously will be doing more work. We'll be getting new vehicles, because you remember we're doing the enterprise fleet program. We don't have a place to have full vehicles as a, as a charter fleet of that. It was how to place actually storing the vehicles in place. We're running out of room at our, our shop. I'm not sure if anyone's aware, situation aware, but if you drive downtown on a Friday after five, you'll see all the city vehicles in the street. And if anyone wondered why?
Well, we know why, we know what.
Yeah, and, and it's been, and it's been working for us, that we don't have the facilities to put vehicles. And we're not going to get rid of every single vehicle that we could replace because as we hire new divisions, we're going to need vehicles. So we know that we're going to get new vehicles and we'll keep some of those older trucks. Because there's still some that are in good enough shape. But we know that we need to have a fleet and a place to put them.
This is going to be covered, storage at the home works plant now.
Yeah.
The sweep, street sweeper, is that a replacement? Or we buy one so we can have two of them on here?
I am not sure, Shane, could you weigh in on that? And I'll take a text.
Yeah, it's, it's a new unit. The one we have is about 11 years old and it's getting kind of glitchy. Those, those sweepers have a lot of electronics on them. And so we're, we're looking, you know, if we can't get it this year, next year is fine, but we need to start having that conversation about replacement.
Mr. Fisher, I remember one time when the city had a whole lot of hoopla about buying a new street sweeper. It turned out to be exactly the wrong one and it didn't work at all for our sweet, our streets. Let's be really, really careful not to repeat that in the same.
We're seeing gravity when that happens.
I was unfortunate.
Okay, so if there's no other questions on this slide, we will turn to the next one. And remember, these are enhancement requests, they have to be funded. So this one is, is a real nail-biter for us in finance department. We have been told by Frank Brooks, when we purchased by it, that they are no longer going to support. Express, which we kind of knew was coming, because that's usually why big, big companies purchase. That's usually why big, big companies purchase small companies. So we've looked at a series of different things that we could use. I mean, really honestly, Springbrook S A A S, third cloud hosted fleet adds the things that we need and can easily be converted from our current software, because they have been converting customers this last year or two. But without our financials, human resources, which we currently do not have a model for that, utility billing, payroll, and online fee. And in association with that, we would also have community and economic development requests. And this one would be to the same program and we would have permitting, code enforcement, community portal, public works, inspection, and licensing. The price tag, as you see here, 320,000 for the first year and implementation that is only on finance and admin services. The community and economic development, it would be 110,000. So we know this ask is a hard ask. We are being put in a position where we have, we have to make a decision in the next few months, um, whether we can afford this and go forward. Our financial software is probably one of the most important tools we have at City Hall. It, it manages our day-to-day work. It does things. She has an error, C E D through Open Gov. So community and economic development, I want to use Open Gov, not Springbrook, because those two talk to each other. So they would automatically update each other. We wouldn't have that. Currently, right now, we use iWorks and for planning and permitting. And we have to do a manual upload to buy it, uh, Springbrook in order to get that to work. And we often have trouble with reconciling those things, um, because it's just, it's not user-friendly. So in our, um, our building, um, same person upfront, um, it's Nova. He has to put every single permit manually in the system every single time. She, iWorks doesn't have a way to go back in and find a customer and search for them. You have to put their information in every time. So it's very time consuming for her. These would be integrated and we wouldn't have to worry about that back and forth. And annual product license, so in 2024, we would have 35,000 for the admin side for finance and 35,000 for the community and economic.
Questions, comments, council?
I'll just compare to what we're paying.
I don't need exact dollars, but I want to say when iWorks was implemented, it was about 12,000 dollars a year. And then, um, Springbrook, I want to say is about 20, each Jameson.
So I understand that we are outsourcing our utility billing. How is that correct?
No, we have it in-house, utility billing.
This statement comes from some other town.
Correct. We, we outsource the printing.
Outsource the printing, but this allow us to print in-house or we still have to outsource?
I think that would have to be a decision based on how many people we have in the finance department. They charge $800 to print those bills and mail them. And for us, if you do it in-house, it'd take two, three days and we'd have to buy a bunch of equipment. So I don't know if it would be economical to do that.
Mr. Hick has a question.
Okay, go ahead. Uh, you said, uh, community and economic development wants to go a, a different version, Open Gov or?
Yeah, and it's.
Now, would S A S, S A A S, if you did both, would it be cheaper to combine it that way than in separate groups?
Actually, this, this is more robust for what we want in the planning, community, economic development areas, but Springbrook doesn't have all of the things that we have down here. So this would be a better tool for us. And she says, um, Springbrook costs are actually 35,000 a year and community and economic development increased by 50. And just so you're situationally aware, we, um, canceled our contract with them starting, so we, it's ending November 1st. And we were great rude with Jameson, deliver email and that he not care for the way that they treated her. And so we, we know that the program we're not going to use anymore at all. And we're going to, at a minimum, go back and putting it in permitting and in Springbrook for right now. But you'll see that there's also a module for code enforcement, a community portal. So this would be for our community to go in and do records or, uh, requests for voting permits, requests for code enforcement through the website. And we would also be able to do public works and inspections and then dog licenses, if we decided to do yard sale preventions. So it does have a lot more robust. Has anyone gotten yard sales lately? So you have to come to City Hall and fill out a paper and then make a photocopy of it and then it gets put into a report sheet and monitor how many you've had, which we are doing a great job of. So this would be able to do a tracking.
I don't know if any of those did.
So I recall, and other council members, the long drawn out and often painful process of converting items. And so now this is all changing again, is this going to be easier and more smoothly? Or are we going to have to go through this air bomb, painful, exasperating process again?
Not to, um, cherish any former staff. It had someone in the finance division that did not understand, computers couldn't remember passwords and was not capable of doing the work that needed to be done to get this going. So I'm not sure if you know, but I know when I finished this, that when I started in 14, it was implemented in call. I was operating well, implemented in 13, and then I came in May of 14 and started and getting all the modules working. With this being already a Springbrook product, um, you probably, like I said, they've already been doing this. And you have two very capable people in the finance department, Jameson and Lila, that will keep it all rolling. So I'm very confident this will be much smoother. And, and I'm not sure if you guys are aware of this, but today is the third and Lila starts working on the bank rec, usually the very first, and she's done the first week of them. So we won't be 12 or 14 months behind in, in bank records. We do everything and we get it.
Other questions, comments? Carry on.
Okay. So this is just a budget calendar reminder. So we have our open public, our regular open public meetings. This is where you then give them a preliminary budget. And then we will have a public hearing on revenue sources starting on October 10th. And then we will have the property tax levy and budget message on October 24th. A public hearing on a preliminary budget, November 14th. Public hearing and adoption of budget, November 28th. And final amendment for this year, 2022, on December 12th. And that takes care of it. And so the one question that I have for the council is, would you like a Saturday budget retreat where we get together and go, go over things in more detail? And you have a chance to answer one question or you ask more questions. Maybe you can answer some too.
Council member, what do you think about that idea?
Getting all the answers right here as well.
Okay, so we will schedule another one of these at a budget workshop and get you everything updated numbers. And then we're, we're striving to get you job descriptions this year as well. So we got that on the vermin. So we're, we're working on a lot of things.
Like you say, this is very important. In person makes a huge difference.
I agree.
What was that, Ms. Art?
I said, I said, I agree.
Oh, yes, okay. So I want to recall to council that.
That's all I said.
It's really easy for us to put our faith in our staff. We've got a brilliant staff and I'm really pleased with what I've seen so far. But this budget is also our responsibility, is up to us to prove it. And as we improve it, it's important that we also, in our, in the best way possible, try to understand it as best we can. So please take some time, review this material, um, talk to staff, talk to city manager and ask the questions that might come up while you're studying this. It's, I know we're all busy and we've all got lives outside of these chambers, but it is important that we spend some time and study this and learn what we're, learn what we're dealing with. I, for one, get asked questions every year about changes to the budget. What are you doing about this and why did you change that? And now that I'm part, one of the mayors of the valley, I hear it from other mayors, why did you do this? And oddly enough, I run into them in strange places and they all shop and eat out with their families as well. And we see each other and we ask each other questions. So it's important that we know this stuff. So take some time.
And as Mary says, uh, we're available at City Hall anytime you have. Uh, we take you know, in person, phone call.
Right, our next item is upcoming council meeting. And a week ago, we went over what's on the agenda. I don't think there's been a lot of changes to.
Before that, we quit. I have one thing. So October 10th, we have the waste garbage projects. We'll have the 2023 revenue sources and add more in public hearings. Hazmat report to the, uh, close. And this is the N P P D O B I D A. Oh, that's the one that M, uh, Chief Anderson answered. Criminal code, I think, headline. And then I set the one energy leak on here, surplus property. May or may not go. We met with them last week and they want to make some changes to the amount of parcels they're using. So we realized they may have to, um, change that. And so we're going to talk to them about what. Then October 24th, we have the Amareco Energy Stating Center. Finding where they go through and look at our lighting upgrades, our H P A C upgrades, windows, things like that. Presentations, the manager presents the budget. Property tax ordinances and 2022 quarter three. And we're going to do Amareco as a placeholder for the November 7th workshop. If honestly, if you can't get through everything and you seem to have more questions at the October 24th meeting, then I'm limiting them to 15 minutes. And then I'm proposing putting in on the next budget or the next workshop so that if you do feel like we need more time, we can move that. And new job descriptions and then obviously we will put the preliminary budget prescriptions and more budget work on that.
All right, council, if anybody feels the need to add something to the budget, talk to me or the city manager. Obviously, it'll be published by Friday, so let's get into the manager by Wednesday.
And, uh, Jameson says, I'm telling you, she is sincerely sorry that she couldn't navigate the phone and the phone. And it made it very well and it's the thing we communicate all the time.
Yeah, right. And we feel bad that, uh, Jameson, while on vacation, has to, uh, be at a city meeting. So may you enjoy the rest of your vacation, Jameson. All right, there being no further business to come before council. And without objection, this meeting is adjourned.